City of Hickman abides by the Nebraska Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is on display in this meeting room as required by Nebraska state law. Notice of meeting and copies of this agenda have been publicly posted prior to the meeting at the Hickman City Hall, Hickman US Post Office, Ustop Market, and City Hickman website. There's a participant sign and sheet available and disclosure of meeting recording process notice posted. All individuals requesting to be registered agenda speakers must fill out a registered speaker card and submit to the recording clerk. The mayor or presiding meeting officer reserves the right to deny this request or will call you to the podium when your agenda item is ready to be heard. Presentations, if allowed, may be limited to five minutes per person. Please come to the podium and clearly state your name, address for the record, and the agenda topic you wish to speak upon in a professional manner. Public hearing testimonies may be limited to five minutes per person. All individuals requesting to hand out documents to city council members must deliver them directly to the city clerk for distribution. The city council may vote to go into executive closed session on any agenda item as allowed by Nebraska state law. The governing body may be excused and reenter the city council meeting room at any time after reconvening open session. If everyone would stand for their pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Michelle, if you call a roll, please.
Garry, Garry.
Here.
Nora.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Zeman.
Here.
Johada.
Here.
Colicky.
Here.
Orkar.
Here.
Mayor Communications, I have none, so with that, we will go right into the consent agenda. Item five A is approval of May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five city council meeting minutes. They are in your notebook. Does anybody have any corrections? If not, we will then go to item five B, Claims and Accounts Payable Report. And for this, we will turn this over to Michelle.
Um, the claims are estimated, the highlighted ones on there are the changes that I made since, um, Saturday. There were a few of the payroll ones, I didn't have the dollar marks yet, most have been filled in. Otherwise, municipal supply, um, that was something that they purchased, uh, for a water leak. And it ended up being on the service line. And so they're just putting it in stock to have for later. And that culture index was taken off.
Any questions for Michelle? Or Kelly, for that matter.
And so the BACH financial, that's our.
Bond payments.
That's our, what we, for our projects, right?
Those are our bond payments, it was the twenty twenty-one years, AMV.
So what's the NDE charge for?
That's the revolving, um, revolving loan, the NDE loan, that's for the UV, uh, processing portion of the wastewater treatment plant we had to put in multiple years ago.
Oh, we're still paying on that?
Mm-hmm, we're always done though.
Any other questions? Uh, scene nine, we'll go to item five C, uh, Statement of Accounts and Budget Cash Report as of March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. With that, we will have Carrie present.
Alright. This is kind of a preliminary, I've just pulled up the financial statements with the period actual. Uh, we're still, I'm still working on getting revenues recorded in here, so you're gonna see some of those numbers look a little odd because we're still, I'm still depositing those. The expenses are gonna look a lot better. Um, I know this isn't the format you're used to seeing, you're look, you normally are seeing a summary, but if you kinda just take it down to the bottom, electric, you'll kinda see more of a summary of that. And I'll bring the finished one for you next meeting, so that we can get that all updated. So, I'm just gonna kinda skip over revenue that's come in right now, um, because it's not gonna be accurate. When we get to more of the expenses, this is something that's gonna be your accounts payable, the things that have already come out. So this is gonna be much more accurate, especially when you move into it. But if you just top, you know, go right down to the bottom where it's like total general, total community center. And if some of these wrap in together and they would normally be reported together, like community center and the general. But you can see the streets, what we've spent on that, and kinda get into the water. So, that's kind of what, that's, that's kind of the makeup of where I get the data to put into that spreadsheet. So I'll get this summarized for you.
Did you say we don't have this in our packets, is that right?
Pardon?
You said we don't have this on Spark, or do we? Am I just missing?
I don't think it is.
No, it's not, it was something that Carrie had just found right now for.
Yeah, this is why I can at least get you some information now, because I'm working on that, I'm working on all kinds of things right now. Alright, Statement of Bank Accounts. And pretty much, we've got January, February, March, um, looks like the date on March is, should be two thousand and twenty-five, not two thousand twenty-five seventy-four. But it looks like we've just had, pretty much everything is staying right around the same. Um, we know we did open a couple, uh, new banks accounts for accounts that don't really, they don't see any activity. But that amount is still on there, and then it'll be, be reported exactly the same, so. I guess anything with like a discrepancy or like a change, that would be that, those bond payments, so, if you have questions about those.
Alright, any questions for Carrie on the, uh, Statement of Cash Bank Accounts?
The TIF account, what's that coming from?
Pardon?
The TIF account?
The TIF account?
So that.
That little one?
Yeah, that lower balance in there, those are, um, remnants of interest accrued for when we did have TIF projects and, uh, we had some monies in there, so.
Any other questions? Alright, Carrie, if you wanna go to the monthly sales tax.
You bet. So yeah, we've got the sales taxes come in for the last few months, and we've got, we just received, um, in the month of March, we're going up to March thirty-first here. And we received, the total amount was fifty thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight eighty-nine was what was deposited. And if you go down, it's the allocation to the city, and then that settlement amount in that darker column would be, I guess, on the prior page. That's the actual amount that we received, so it's kind of a double check that I use. Um, that's kinda what we had received to the city. And then, on the bottom, the next sheet, this is kind of our running total. And you'll see we've made some bond payments to the community center, and we've got all that money that we had received. And then you'll also see that that be, that bottom amount is gonna match that bank statement for March. I know normally I have a little like, what we did last year, but I didn't print that up, so.
I was just gonna ask, do you know our?
I know, I was like, I just was like, oh.
Do you know if we're up?
We're up, yep.
Alright, any other questions for Carrie on the sales tax? Thank you, Carrie.
You bet, and I promise, it'll get.
Alright, if there's no other questions, I would enter a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Alright, motion was made by Mr. Nor, and second by Mr. Wagner to approve the consent agenda. Michelle, if you call a roll, please.
Nora.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeman.
Yes.
Johada.
Yes.
Colicky.
Yes.
Orkar.
Yes.
Garry.
Sorry.
I don't get it, but. Alright, trick me, aren't ya? Alright, item six, Proclamations, Presentations, Appointments, Affirmations, Introductions. Uh, this time, we'll have a presentation of the two thousand twenty-five Employee Handbook Revised, and Jenna Nasev?
Nasev.
Oh, yeah, I butchered it.
What, that's okay, you're five C.
Nasev, uh, from Zell is here to go over that with us.
Okay, thank you for having me, um, so I'm just going to go down, um, by each section, um, so you guys can follow along if you'd like, um, with your handouts that you have. Um, so I'll just start with our updates that we made, um, in section one. We basically just updated the purpose of the handbook, just saying that it supersedes all previous versions and it does not serve as a contract of employment. Um, section two updates, uh, that we made to employee policies and rights. Uh, most of this section included updates to the verbiage in each, um, area to be compliant. We gave more detail for employees on the process of reporting any harassment. And we also added new required sections outlining protections for pregnant workers, and then also break time for nursing mothers to expel breast milk while at work. Um, section three, Employment Relationship. The updates made in this section primarily focused on standardizing basic employee guidelines, which does include job descriptions, new employee expect- expectations, performance reviews, conflict of interest procedures, and progressive disciplinary actions. We also added some new policies regarding personal relationships at work of a romantic nature, um, employment of relatives, and then non-solicitation, just to ensure ethical and professional conduct within the workplace. Um, section four, Employment Classification Hour and Wage Policies. So this section included updates to verbiage to reflect current practices and also to provide structure to employees surrounding tardiness and absences. We did also add a new policy to provide guidelines to employees regarding the process to report any errors that they might find on their paychecks. Um, section five, Rules of Conduct. Uh, we did end up updating several policies in this section, including making some changes to the technology device usage and IT security guidelines. Uh, we combined a few old policies into one policy that now is the property and equipment policy. We revised the smoking and tobacco policy, and then we did add some new policies, um, surrounding employer-sponsored social events, visitors in the workplace, and then expanded the paid volunteer leave with the addition of eight hours of approved volunteer time. Section six, Employee Benefits. So this section update just clarifies that the benefit information in those plan documents, um, from the insurance companies does, does supersede the information in this handbook. Um, for specific details, we just ask that employees request those summary plan documents and refer to those, uh, for additional details. Um, and then additionally, we did, um, update the dollar amounts given for cash in lieu of benefits and then the HRA. Section seven, which is our leave policies. Um, so updates in this section clarify procedures for using vacation time and then also taking leave without pay. Um, we did also update the verbiage in the FMLA, the Military Leave and the Jury Duty sections to be compliant with Nebraska law. Section eight, Standards and Expectations. We updated the policies in this section to prohibit employees from accepting gifts, bribes, or favors. And we provided clear guidelines on reporting criminal activity if it occurs while employed. We also modified the travel policy and the credit card policy to ensure employees are reimbursed for expenses prior to their trips, and then also just to reflect the current city practices. And then, the last section that we made updates to was section nine, which is the Health, Safety, and Security Policies. Uh, we updated the policies in this section to include clear guidelines for workers' compensation and then also for employees returning to work after an injury. Uh, we expanded the drug and alcohol policy to cover off-duty activities and also reasonable suspicion. We added procedures for reporting workplace violence, we declared the workplace as weapons-free, and then established guidelines for operations during inclement weather. Thank you.
That's a lot.
It was.
I wanna personally thank you for all the time you spent, I wanna thank the Personnel Committee too. We did meet three times, and, uh, Kelly and Jenna, it was quite the undertaking, so thank you very much.
Absolutely, happy to help, thank you.
Any questions for her, real quick? Alright, thank you, Jenna.
I got another question.
Yeah.
So there was, uh, some stuff in here for compliance?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, like, okay, when, when we're not compliant with something, how is that updated, like, immediately? You know what I mean, like, a law?
So if, like, for example, if this handbook is already in effect and then a new update comes out, we can update it anytime we need to. It's, we consider it a working document. Any other questions?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on, we will go to item seven, uh, evidently there is no Public Works Parks Recreation Department report, so we will move to item seven B, City Code Violations, Abatements, nuisances, and Provenance.
So city staff has prepared this report for your review. Um, uh, just a lot of weeds taller than ten inches on residential properties, a trailer on the city street, um, and they are in process of being taken care of, or they've already been completed with action.
Alright, any questions, comments? Short but sweet, so if not, I would entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to approve reports. Second. Alright, motion was made by Mr. Wagner, second by Mr. Colicky to approve the reports as given. Michelle, if you call a roll, please.
Nora.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeman.
Yes.
Johada.
Yes.
Colicky.
Yes.
Orkar.
Yes.
Alright, item eight, Public Hearings, there are none for tonight, so item nine, and finished business. Nine A is ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash zero six, an ordinance amending the master fee schedule. Uh, this is the third and final reading of this one. Again, it's just in front of you there, Kelly has it in front of you, just posting our current fees and taking out some that no longer exists with us, the electrics, so.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh six on third and final reading.
Second. Alright, motion was made by, excuse me, Mr. Wagner, and second by Mr. Nor, to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash zero six, and ordinance amending the master fee schedule on third and final reading. Michelle, if you call a roll, please.
Nora.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeman.
Yes.
Johada.
No.
Colicky.
Yes.
Orkar.
No.
Alright, motion carried. Item nine B, Ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash zero seven, Final Plat of Ettmann Estate, second edition, and this also is the second reading. Uh, this is for the final plat, so Kelly, do you have anything new?
Um, we did have some amendments to this subdivision agreement after our last meeting, and those were included in the draft in your packet. So we assigned an exhibit number to section one. Um, in section eleven, uh, the count, per the council, uh, member motion at last meeting, um, in lieu of Parkland dedication, the subdivider shall pay the city upon the approval of final plat, the sum of two hundred dollars per lot, based on the total number of lots shown on the plat. And another addition we had that was changed was section fourteen. Um, the amount of the time and material cost of a streetlight installed by the city is now four thousand five hundred dollars and not three thousand dollars. And those were basically due to the cost of the materials per streetlight. And the subdivide, I'm sorry, the developer and its agents are aware of the changes to the subdivision agreement and, uh, did not have any concerns with what's being presented this evening.
So in the previous, we would put those out, right, in the city?
Yes.
Probably gonna do that now, is Norris putting them up, or?
No, the city is still required to put up decorative streetlights. Our Norris Power, um, lease agreement is only for the main lighting, like on sixty-eight and Hickman Road.
So why do we have, why do we have decorative lighting?
That's just what they call it.
It's, it's how the, it's how Norris Public Power defines that type of streetlight, 'cause they're smaller streetlights, they're not the large ones with the arms that come over on our major streets, they're the smaller ones with like, the hot cats.
Ah, got it, got it. The ones in the, yeah, okay.
Mm-hmm, they're considered a decorative streetlight, which is.
So if we got tires, I'm gonna do that, or wire them?
Yeah, I imagine it'll go similar to how it's gone in the past with other, um, developments and where, um, when they are doing the trench in the easements, uh, you know, wind stream drops their line, and, uh, Black Hills, next link might drop a line in, the utility companies would kinda share that trenching cost. And then the city puts in the electrical for the streetlights, and we have a, uh, s- subcontractor that would come help us. In the past, it was Schmider Electric, Schmider Construction.
We can put the light up, they gotta wire it.
Hickman will do the trenching for all of it, too. Yeah, Hickman will do the trenching and put the light up and all that.
We do the trenching by the materials, and then the subcontractor will do the installation for the city staff.
Does this MOU cover them being able to, um, what street is that? Cypress, the one that they were gonna?
No, and I'll report on that during my city administrative report.
Okay.
Yeah, Ettmann Estate, second edition, Final Plat, has nothing to do with Cypress at this point in time, other than we're changing some access, but it is a separate legal situation.
Okay.
Alright, any other questions or comments on the final plat? Remember, this is the second reading. I'll make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh sec, oh seven on the second reading.
Second.
Alright, motion was made by Mr. Nor, and second by Mr. Wagner, to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash zero seven, uh, Final Plat for Ettmann State, second edition, on second reading, Michelle, if you call a roll, please.
Nora.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeman.
Yes.
Johada.
Yes.
Colicky.
Yes.
Orkar.
Yes.
Alright, this will be on the next meeting agenda, on the third reading. So, item nine C, Ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash zero eight, Annexation of Ettmann Estate, second edition. This is also the second reading for this, uh, remember, this has to go the three readings, so I don't think anything's changed on this.
No, no edits have been made.
So we would, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh eight on second reading.
Second.
Alright, motion was made by Mr. Wagner, second by Ms. Zeman, to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash zero eight, Annexation of Ettmann Estate, second edition, on second reading. Michelle, if you call a roll, please.
Nora.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeman.
Yes.
Johada.
Yes.
Colicky.
Yes.
Orkar.
Yes.
Alright.
Quick questions, Mayor, on the one before, did we get a agreement to proceed for utility or?
To start, yes.
Yeah, we did get it, okay.
I could get that. Alright, so with that, we will move to item ten, New Business. Uh, ten A is Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash zero five, The Employee Handbook Revised. So this is what Jenna spoke about.
So you're gonna have a meeting with staff, right?
Yes, that meeting has been scheduled for June twenty-third, um, if the, uh, resolution is adopted with the revisions to the employee handbook, um, as recommended by the Personnel Committee and Mayor Garing. Um, this resolution, uh, states the effective date of the handbook would be June twenty-second, which is a Sunday in the beginning of a payroll period. And we have a staff meeting with Zell HR scheduled for, uh, the morning of the twenty-third.
They get, they'll get a copy before, right there.
Yes, if this resolution is approved this evening, all in, full-time employees will receive a copy of the employee handbook tomorrow, so they can have time to review it before June twenty-third and bring their questions to that staff meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh five, Employee Handbook Revised.
Second. Alright, motion was made by Mr. Wagner, second by Mr. Nor, to approve Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash zero five, The Employee Handbook Revised. Any other questions, comments? Michelle, if you call a roll, please.
Nora.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeman.
Yes.
Johada.
Yes.
Colicky.
Yes.
Orkar.
Yes.
Alright. Item ten B, Agreement for Professional Services by Olson for Hickman Reservoir and Pump Station. And with that, we have Owen from Olson to inform us about this project.
Sure.
Coming project.
So my name is Owen Killam, and I work with Olson, and I haven't met most of you on the, on the board, um, but we've been working with the City of Hickman for a long time on their water storage needs. So when I first started coming down to Hickman to work, you still had the one water tower, and the operator at the time said you needed another one, the same size, to keep up with demand. Um, your growth projections have blown past what anyone thought in that time, um, the past fifteen, twenty years. Um, now what you're seeing is your average demand is right under three hundred thousand gallons, which is that one tower that you have. And typically, as engineers, we recommend you have either a peak day of storage or an average day of storage plus enough for a fire flow demand. Um, reviewing the historical demands, you're, you're right up against that average day of demand, so there's really no wiggle room for if there's a fire or other emergency you have to take care of. Um, so over the last several years, we've done various projects. We increased the treatment plant capacity, um, we've looked at upsizing the wells and some other different things. Um, we've been meeting the last year a couple different times just to discuss what we wanted to do for storage, and what we landed on was the ground storage reservoir near the, on the, or north of the water treatment plant property. And what we liked about that was it would be a ground storage reservoir, so it wouldn't have any effect on the pressures in town, so we could oversize it to account for future expansion of the system. Um, so you'd, the water would go through the treatment plant, it would go to the reservoir, then be pumped into town. And then, you could drop it in the winter when the demand's not as, as much, and you could fill it fuller in the summer times. Right now, when you're s- seeing more irrigation, things like that, when your demand is higher. Um, so that's, that's the gist of the project. Um, and I meant to mention, so your average day demand is right under three hundred thousand gallons. Um, you do see, sometimes you see spikes up to five hundred thousand gallons even in the low periods of use. You're, in the summer, you're seeing spikes over one million gallons. So, uh, we've not done the numbers yet, we do that with this project, but we're thinking the new reservoir will be in the one million gallon range. Um, and then you'll just, like I said, at the pump station right after that, that'll convey water into the system.
And with this, uh, if this will also improve the efficiency of our wells, correct?
Yes, so that was another thing that, since you're basically using your full reservoir every day, your wells are constantly having to run to keep up and keep the tank full. Um, basically, what Wade has told me is, demand drops off overnight, you know, ten o'clock at night, but in the summer right now, about two o'clock in the morning, as people start to turn their sprinklers on, the wells are running constantly to keep that up. So, if you had a reservoir down at the treatment plant, those wells, instead of trying to play catch-up all day, they'd basically just be topping off that reservoir. And then it, with a full reservoir, the, the wells would be relaxed. Um, and it actually, since it'd be a closer distance to pump to that reservoir versus your water tower in town, you could run those wells at a lower, um, or, lower RPM, slow, you could slow the motors down, basically more efficient, and you could run at a higher flow rate. So, it's gonna ease wear and tear on those two wells without having to do any major work to the wells that you have now.
So, yeah, so in the future, how far would this get us out to, I mean, are we looking, I mean, as far as growth-wise?
So what we're looking at is a twenty-five-year projection right now, and I don't know what the numbers show right now, but that's what we're looking at, is population projections and your per capita water demands that you have now. Um, it's, we'll be on the conservative side, because we have been seeing historically, per capita water usage comes down as, you know, the growth is gonna come into new homes, where you'll have more energy-efficient fixtures and things like that. So you should see the, the per capita demand come down, so we're gonna be a little bit conservative. But we are looking at a twenty-five-year, um, projection for this.
And then, once you get to that point, then what? Is there, do you expand it, or is he just, that's just?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if we blow through it again in twenty-five years, we'll be in this position, maybe you put another one right next to it, or maybe you put a new one elevated, yeah, lots of different options.
Okay. I think the object was, put this in, it gives us the capacity we need right now, and it takes the element. I think the object was put this in, it gives us the capacity we need right now, and it takes the element of our wells, you know, cause we're, need to make, it'll ma- it'll make our wells more efficient. Then as we grow, you know, we're putting that booster pump station sometime right by the water tower, then we, we would put another water tower somewhere and pump from the original tower to that new water tower. As growth occurs, so.
So would we, I mean, we put those storage tanks out there, would we need another water tower? Why would we need another water tower?
Hickman continues to grow, you're gonna it create another pressure zone, and then that booster pump would just be a. You would size that water tower, the elevation to get your uh pressures required. It'd just be another pressure zone in Hickman.
This reservoir would be going on the north side of where the treatment plant is, is that land that we own or that would have to be?
Correct.
That is not land that we own, no, we would have to uh talk to the farmer or the owner.
So we're just assuming that they would sell it?
Pardon me?
We're assuming that they would sell it to the city?
I've had, I've talked to him and let him be aware, he knows.
Is it Beal?
No, Al Beatty.
Okay.
Cause where you're laying, I mean, those tanks, what was the diameter, I can't remember.
Um I don't have here, I think it was seventy-five feet is what I remembered.
So I mean. You know, if we go out two hundred feet, everybody just gotta figure out how far east. You know, it's a long ground strip, but it wouldn't have to go a full distance.
You know, generally tossed around an acre, you know, cause you're gonna have that tank, and then you're also gonna have to have a building with booster pumps in it to.
And room to work.
What's that?
And room to work.
Right. So Owen, so I thi- are you looking at the size of ground necess- necessary?
Yeah, and I wanna say it was like a hundred feet by hun- you know, it was probably two hundred feet by two hundred feet is what I looked at.
Is that gonna give us another room to go east with another tank in twenty-five years?
We could look at that, we could size it that way, yeah.
Well, I would agree to, just in case we need enough.
Yeah. Yeah. It's hard to say, I mean, right now the growth is all going north, so like Phil was saying, you'd probably put the, a new tower up there that would float on the system, but yeah, we, if we wanted to plan that far out ahead, we could plan to have room for a second tank.
It might be a smaller one, but.
Yeah, yep.
So this is uh. You guys are looking at the design of both the tank and pump station, the, the whole gamut?
Yes, yep. And this agreement takes it from basically survey, the geotechnical explorations we'd have to do for the tank and booster pump station, all the way through design and through bidding.
So with that geotechnical, you really can't start this until we have the ground anyway?
Right, yep.
What do we anticipate something like this is going to cost, we're just paying for the engineering services on this, right, this is the agreement?
That's a good question, uh you have a rough?
So, yeah, so for a tank, for a one million gal- gallon tank, the cost today, and it changes every day, right now, um the current costs are about one point eight million for a ground storage reservoir of that size. And then the, the booster pump station, I'd estimate in the two hundred, three hundred thousand range, so it's gonna, it's gonna be around two million dollars in today's dollars.
Plus land.
It does material.
Land, what's that?
It does material.
No, that's construction of the tank.
One point two?
One point eight.
I think we were thinking four, five or six.
Well, that was for an actual tower.
It might have been for an elevated, elevated towers are higher than ground storage.
All pun intended.
This is all connected back up and running.
What's that?
This is connected back up to our lines and running.
The cost you're saying?
Yeah.
Yes, yep.
What was the pump?
I'm, I'm estimating three hundred thousand range, it'd be a small booster pump station.
Is that a stationary or is that, could you entertain a pre-made one like we're looking at?
It'd probably be a prefabricated one like that, yeah.
What is the timeline we're looking at of, this is something we know that we need, correct?
I don't know, Owen, how fast do you, what is your timeline on this?
So what, the way we phased it out is we, if we, everything was signed today and assuming land goes through and everything like that, we could be ready to bid this about a year from now, probably a little less than that.
So it's a year out?
A year out, yep.
And then how are we expecting to fund this?
That would be a question for Kelly.
Um so these services are funded by the water utility revenues from the selling of water to our customers.
So we talked about using that federal grant, right, or federal money?
Yes, yes, so the one million dollars that were proposed to us to be used for the wastewater treatment plant um didn't qualify anymore. So with an amended application to. The federal government, we can have that million dollars, it's ear tag for the City of Hickman, it's not gonna go away, they're not gonna take it away from us, but I need to appeal the application and have it amended. Uh we have support um from Congressman Flood's office for that, they'll work with us on that and help us get that submitted, and then um the one million dollars can be put towards any water project. But because it was a wastewater project and we don't have any anymore wastewater projects coming up right now, we don't have the ability to use that, so we'll put an amended application for a water project, and we have multiple water projects that this, those one million dollars could be applicable to.
So do we need to get that approved before construction starts? I mean.
I've been looking at those timeframes, if we get the amended application in yet this year, um the federal government is really slow with their uh response time and review process and approval process.
Can you have any work?
Um so it probably would take at least a year to hear it was approved, it's, it's an. The representatives from Congressman Flood's office had explained to us, it's, it's a very simple process, it's what they call a no-brainer, um there would be no reason for them to deny our request to switch it from wastewater to water.
Well, we just need to get it in.
Yeah, yes.
And to, with that, doesn't that require US-made?
Yes, there'll be those federal guideline specifications of uh Build America, Buy America and the Davis Bacon Act and.
Yep. Right, yep. Is it um ARPA funding you're talking about, SRF?
It's, no, it's none, none of those, it's from the appropriations committee.
Oh, okay.
Directly.
Gotcha.
Just trying to think how this looks aesthetically too, as you're, I mean, I'm just trying to picture what this looks like.
It looks like maybe a fourth house. Everything varied.
How it looks like what aesthetically?
Yes, yeah aesthetically.
So like your Lincoln tanks as you go on on fifty-sixth street, you know, that's a ground storage thing, just a.
Kind of similar to that.
And then I'll have a little building, a little building in front with pumps and.
Probably not that big.
Yeah.
The tank won't be that big, but those are, those are multiple million.
Like the wrong, maybe fourth and.
Right.
And this is something that's just, it's managed by our staff as well, right?
Correct, yes.
Would you, would you, you looked at the, when the tower was built, what, seventy-seven?
Seventy-seven, yep, I did the research in seventy-seven and I think I talked to most everybody, and my numbers were, in seventy-seven, we had roughly two hundred and eighty users when that tower was built. And look how, and now I think we've got uh, and I counted the apartments as one unit, uh I think we're roughly twelve hundred units. So we've grown and the water tower has not grown with it. So either it was way over size back then or, and you know, like I tell everybody, now underground sprinklers, in seventy-seven, there was probably no underground sprinklers in Hickman, now every house has them. And that does take a burden when they all kick on. So this will, hopefully with this and that new booster station hopefully bidding out, will help some of the pressure problems like they're experiencing in Terresquie, especially when the long drawn, dry uh season of summer comes.
What was the, um we were talking with the firemen, he said they'd, they'd collapse our main if they hooked on to. The pressure that we have now.
I, I'd never heard that from the fire department, but it's been s- said that, yeah, they would have to bring in water from elsewhere.
They have to, they have to pump, yeah.
So, this would help, and that new booster station would help when that gets put online. So it all is just part of working together.
What are you seeing right now, lag time on a project like this, you guys finish the design, bids come in, you pull the trigger to completion?
To completion, um it could, depending on the size of project, it could be six months to, I'd say six to nine months for a tank this size.
So we're probably looking from.
So we're about two years.
Like two years.
Yeah, yep.
It's number twenty-seven. Which seems like a long way to wait, but it's not.
Yep.
Yeah, it does go by past.
So any other questions for Owen? And when you get something drawn up, you will come back to present why it actually, if this moves forward?
Come back down, yes. Yep, absolutely.
Just to be clear, then the scope of services ends at bids being selected?
Correct, yep, and then we would meet again and talk about construction phase services, if you want us involved during construction, you know, doing testing and that sort of stuff, but that's not included in this.
But you've done all the testing on the ground underneath?
We will have, yep, so we'll do a, they'll do site borings to help design, so we won't physically design the foundation for the tank, the tank contractor will do that, but they'll use our geotechnical report to do that, and that's what the geotech reports for. It's for that and then the foundation of the pump station building that'll be going up.
So there won't be any surprises with what's down there?
No.
Hey, we've gotta overexcavate this and, okay.
Should not be, no.
All right, any other questions for Owen? Thank you, Owen.
All right, thank you.
Any comments? Not, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the agreement for professional services by Olsons for Hickman Reservoir and Pump Station.
Second. All right, motion was made by Mister Wagner, second by Mister Noren for the approval of agreement for professional services by Olson for the Hickman Reservoir and Pump Station. Uh do we need money? In that motion?
No, it's printed clearly in the agreement.
All right, any other comments? Michelle, if you call roll please.
Pardon?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zeeman, yes. Dohoda?
Yes.
Colwick?
Yes.
Ford Card?
Yes.
All right. Item ten C wastewater treatment plant project change order number fourteen, final credit for programming completed by HOA under separate contract with the City of Hickman. Kelly?
Um actually Nate is here, um our engineer from Olson, and he's gonna give you an update on the entire project and this change order and the two pay certificates that are um also on the agenda this evening.
Hey, good evening, Nate from Olson, um project has been completed out there, they got seating done about middle of May, stopped by on the way out here, getting to check, and most of it's coming up pretty good. The new clarifier is operating well, um for those of you that have been out there, the water is very clear, we doubled the capacity of what we had out there for clarification, so we have great efficient settling going on. And the bar screen is in operation, we are still working on fine tuning that a little bit, I spoke with uh Huber, the manufacturer of that, earlier today, and uh they've got some settings they wanna adjust to, to make sure it's operating the best it can be. Uh the change order that I have for you tonight was during the project, you guys were going through a system upgrade with HOA, just I think uh under a separate contract. Because of that, there was some overlap with our new equipment coming online, um that the electrician and controls folks that were subcontracted for the wastewater project did not have to do some work, so we requested a credit for that. Which came to the amount of eight thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars, that is the change order, it's for you there today, this is the final change order on the project. We have along with the final uh, two final pay applications, pay application sixteen was for everything up to retainage, and then the last one is just for the retainage. I did wanna touch on a little bit, um I think one of the last things that came to, one of the questions that came up was how do we estimate contingencies on these projects? And what, what should you as the council look at when we go into construction of how much buffer should you, you leave for projects? So as we go through a design project, starting all the way from a study phase, we start with a pretty large contingency, cause there are a lot of unknowns. The more of those that we work through, the more we can bring that down, so some just rough numbers I had for you is when we're in a study or conceptual phase, we're at bigger thirty percent plus contingency, cause there's just a lot we don't know. Sizes of a tank may change drastically, and that thirty percent could be up and down, not just up, we usually like it to come down throughout the project. Um as we move towards final design, we've hopefully brought that down to about twenty percent contingency, kind of in those last meetings we have with you, as we button everything up. When we go to bidding, we hope we're around ten to fifteen percent, and then when we're, we have a bid and contracted work, we still would suggest probably a five percent, up or down from where, where we're starting there. Uh as far as this project goes, we ended up with an overall change orders of three point two percent, which is higher than we would have liked to see, but still within what we would uh consider an acceptable normal margin. Uh the only other note on change orders I did have was that at the December meeting, there was a change order for paving changes, that there was a uh error in our plans in the paving, they required some changes by the contractor. That time I said that Olson had planned to cover that, as that was our error, what we are looking at doing at this time is um back in May of last year, there was a request for us to attend additional meetings that were outside of the scope of our project. We ended up attending eight additional meetings, uh council meetings, and the cost of those exceeded what that paving change order was. If you want us to submit a formal amendment for those, we can, otherwise we would just consider those a wash, but if you'd like us to submit formal paperwork, we can. That's all I have unless there are any questions.
All right, any questions for Nate on uh, to be clear, on the change order part? It is a credit of eight thousand one hundred and seventy-five. Is that correct Nate?
Yes, that is correct, eight thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars.
So I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve. Uh change order number fourteen, final credit for program completed by HOA under separate contract with City of Hickman for eighty-one seventy-five.
Well, second. All right, motion was made by Mister Wagner, second by Mister Noren to approve change order number fourteen, uh final credit for programming completed by HOA. Under separate contract with the City of Hickman, Michelle, if you call roll please.
Noren.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeeman, yes. Dohoda.
Yes.
Colwick?
Yes.
Ford Card?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to item ten D certificate of payment sixteen to New birth construction for the Hickman wastewater treatment plant works and final clarifier improvements in the amount of twenty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty cents. And this was for everything?
This, this was for everything up to the retainage amount.
Okay.
Essentially seating was the last thing they had to complete out there.
And then if this passes, then the year starts from this date of warranty, how does that work?
The warranty date began on May tenth.
May tenth, okay.
May tenth, yep. On May eighth, final completion. Just cause they took a little longer to get to the seating, both the bar screen and the clarifier have both been in operation six months, so essentially you got six months of free warranty, cause they tried their feet a bit.
All right, any questions for Nate on this uh pay certificate?
I'll make a motion to approve certificate payment number sixteen to New birth construction for Hickman wastewater treatment plant headworks and final clarifier improvements in twenty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
Noren.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeeman, yes. Dohoda.
Yes.
Yes.
Cole Wiki?
Yes.
Ford Card?
Yes.
Alright, now ten E, uh, certificate pa- payment number seventeen, final to Newberth Construction Inc. for the Hickman wastewater treatment plant headworks. Final clarifier improvements in the amount of two hundred and five thousand four hundred and seventy five and thirty nine cents, and this for everything, and then, uh, we're done.
Yep, this is the five percent retainage that was on the project, so after this payment, there's no additional payments to Newberth Construction.
Alright, any final questions for Nate while he's up there?
What was our original estimate?
The original estimate on this one, I believe was three point two million, when we, when we went into bidding, bids on this did come back high. Um, part of that was. Trying to recall on this one, part of that was the equipment, came in higher than expected, as things tend to do right now, um. And there were a few other things, we did have two bidders on this project, bids were within, I wanna say five percent of each other, so the bids were very close. So we felt like we had a competitive bidding environment.
Alright, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to, to approve the certificate of payment number seventeen, final to Newberth Construction Inc. for the Hickman wastewater treatment plant headworks and final clarifier. Improv- improvements in the amount of two hundred and five thousand four hundred and seventy five dollars and thirty nine cents.
Second.
Alright, motion was made by Mr. Noren, second by Ms. Zeman, to approve certificate of payment number seventeen, uh, to Newberth Construction Inc. for. Hickman wastewater treatment plant headworks and final clarifier improvements in the amount of two hundred and five thousand four hundred and seventy five and thirty nine cents, Michelle, if you call the roll, please.
Noren?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zeman?
Yes.
Drahoda?
Yes.
Cole Wiki?
Yes.
Ford Card?
Yes.
Alright, thank you Nate, appreciate all the work you've done.
Yeah, you're welcome, I, I did have one other update, just to, um, on the existing final clarifier, I know we mentioned the, kind of evaluating it and seeing what it would need. We're gonna be working through that with Wade and the staff out there, um, it has been in operation eighteen years. That kind of equipment has a design expectancy of twenty years, so we're right up against it, but, um, we'll continue working through that.
And that has not been drained yet, correct?
It is not, so, right now the steps we're looking at is, when we have EnviroDyne out, who manufacture both the exist, the old and the new final clarifier. When they come out to check up on the new one, to have them look at the dried unit on the old clarifier while it is in operation, so they can hear the noises it's making. And then at a later date, whether it's this fall after flows have dropped, then we will drain the clarifier and do a, a full inspection.
Okay. Thank you, we do appreciate all you've done.
Thank you.
Alright, with that, we'll move to item ten F, and that's purchase of two thousand twenty five Chevy Silverado twenty five hundred. Per adopted for year ending two thousand twenty five budget and capital improvement plan. And I think. You guys have attached. Uh, the copy of the bid and specifications of the truck, of the truck, and, uh, Kelly, go ahead.
Yes, so this is a two thousand twenty five, uh, Chevy Silverado twenty five hundred HD, um, it's a nice large truck, um, to add to our fleet, we have six, this will be the seventh. Um, we do not plan on surplus li- surplusing any of the other trucks right now because they are all in use by staff. Uh, the purpose of this truck is to add a snowplow, uh, to it as well, um, so we have an extra truck to plow with this winter. Um, the approved, uh, city budget this year and our capital improvement plan has sixty thousand dollars in the budget for a truck with a plow kit. Um, when Wade was calling around looking for prices and whatnot, this is a very good price and the best one we've received by making phone calls and checking current inventories. Um, we actually had a quote of a two thousand twenty four Chevy Silverado with, gosh, I wanna say it had like fifteen or twenty thousand miles on it, and it was actually three thousand dollars more than this truck. So the best option was to present to you the two thousand twenty five Chevy Silverado as brought to you this evening, and of course, the specifications of that is all here as well.
That's single cab?
Yes.
We don't get, uh, they don't offer the government rates anymore, do they?
Yes.
They don't?
Yeah, we talk to them and they give us a government rate. And of course, it's, it's, uh, sales tax exempt as well.
What, what does it cost to put a plow on it?
Probably fifteen.
And the electronics and everything?
About fifteen thousand dollars.
And Wade will be getting estimates for that.
Yeah. He calls our, um, vendor Nebraska, so, I can't remember the name of it, actually.
Oh, we got sixty to work with and.
Yeah, so we try to budget enough for the truck and the snowplow equipment, so this is the price of the truck, so we can purchase, um, that plow equipment. And Wade is trying to get a good price on, uh, not the snowplow with a straight flat blade, but this one has wings on it, so it would help them in doing cul-de-sacs and avoiding mailboxes. And, cause the wings on the end of this particular snowplow are movable, for which way you need the snow, uh, to be directed while you're plowing it.
Kelly, is that sixty thousand dollars included in what we did two weeks ago with that money, or is that separate just for the truck and the plow?
No, it's separate, this is just for the truck and the plow, and the cost of this vehicle and the plow, um, we share, they're shared costs between the water department, wastewater department, and also the streets department. And the parks department.
When was the last time you bought a truck, wasn't last year, was it?
It was two years.
Two years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we, we actually, for, we actually took like two years to get that.
Yeah.
Yeah, they was, they were hard to find, there was none in inventory.
Cause we approved it, and then when it was like two years later before we got one.
Mm-hmm.
So we're not putting cash down?
No, that's just something that this dealership does, what, the check would be issued for the forty seven, two thousand ninety nine dollars. Um, the city pays, um, for their vehicles in full when they're purchased.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the two thousand twenty five Chevy Silverado twenty five hundred per adopted. FYE two thousand twenty five budget and capital improvement plan for forty seven thousand two hundred ninety nine dollars.
Second.
Alright, motion was made by Ms. Zeman, second by Mr. Noren to approve the purchase of two thousand twenty five Chevy Silverado twenty five hundred. Uh, per adopted, uh, for year ending two thousand twenty five budget and capital improvement plan, uh, for the amount of forty seven. Forty seven thousand two hundred ninety nine dollars, Michelle, if you call the roll, please.
Noren?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zeman?
Yes.
Wagner?
He said yeah.
He said yeah.
Yes, sorry.
Drahoda?
No.
Cole Wiki?
Yes.
Ford Card?
Yes.
Alright, motion passed five to one, uh, item ten G, consideration of land acquisition for public parking. Kelly?
Um, with this, I would like to discuss, uh, potential land acquisition for the city of Hickman for a potential public parking space in closed session, if you could, please.
Before you have a sample motion, so.
Approximately fifteen minutes.
I move to go into executive session for fifteen minutes for the purpose of discussing real estate purch- purchase?
Second.
Alright, motion was made by Mr. Noren, second by Ms. Zeman, to move into, to move to go into executive session for approximately fif- for fifteen minutes for the purpose of discussing real estate purchases.
Um, would you have a friendly amendment to your motion to include the city administrator in closed session, please?
Yes.
Alright, Tina, is that alright?
Yes.
With, uh, the, uh, for the city administrator to also attend, so. Everybody understand, fifteen minutes, closed session, Michelle, if you call the roll, please.
Noren?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zeman?
Yes.
Drahoda?
Yes.
Cole Wiki?
Yes.
Ford Card?
Yes.
Alright, motion carried. We will, thank you, everyone that's in attendance. We'll be back. Alright, we are back in session, uh, we will now resume open session at eight twelve. So, with that. As soon as I get my schedule here. We will move on to, uh, item eleven, city administration's report.
Thank you, um, so, real quick, I wanna pull up a few pictures for you, um, another budgeted item we have annually, um, is for sewer line repairs and replacements throughout town. Because a few years ago, we had the entire town surveyed and we needed to do a lot of repair works, so. I'm gonna pull up the pictures of some locations, um, Johnson Services is the company that we work with, uh, to come fix our sewer lines. So up on the West Dan side, there's, uh, Tenth Street, there's a section there, Wade kinda highlighted these all in red, Orchard Place, needs some repair, um. That street over there, northeast, um, East Ninth Street, that's an eight inch PVC pipe that needs to go through there. And then, uh, all these areas down here, East Fifth, Village View totally needs to be redone, uh, over by Conestoga Avenue, Stagecoach Avenue. Um, and of course, this is all that old SID area where, uh, Wagon Train Road, Wagon Train Avenue, um, if the. Cause I think it's next meeting, we talk about the one and six year plan for Wagon Train Avenue, maybe we can work together, if that's being paved, we can get that sewer line repaired at the same time while the street may be opened up, so. Um, yeah, so that's the sewer repairs that are gonna be done, um, they will get as much completed as possible before the end of our fiscal year for, uh, budgeting purposes. So you'll see them being active here, um.
Are they jetting it, or lining it?
These are all repairs, so some will be a full replacement and some will be just where they go in with that special lining, where they go and they clean it out and they put that special lining inside of it.
So some of that line on the north side of Hickman needs, uh, repair already, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Did you get a chance to meet with Olson's on Wagner?
Yes.
Yes, um, Phil, um, your public works director and your assistant public works director, Trent and myself, and one of the reps from Olson, we all met over on Wagon Train Avenue, walked it. And, um, that'll be, uh, for review and your consideration, and Shane will do a presentation at the June twenty fourth meeting. Sorry, it's tabled right now to the June tenth meeting, but he'll need time to prepare some of the information, so I think with some of the absences on the board and myself, that maybe, um, you can, we'll request to table it from June tenth to the twenty fourth.
Can you ta- were we looking at part panels or full or?
Well, we looked and we counted and. I think, uh, with the two guys is, uh, from Hickman, you know, they come up with just looking at, doing the full thing.
Panels.
Now, whether, whether you stood at first street, or you go around the curve, but.
Was there a small section?
When, when you really do look, and it happened right after a rain event, so we could see all the water standing, which worked out pretty good, but.
Just curious.
Yeah. And I know Kelly made the comment, it's been on there for many years, so.
Yeah, so typically when the str- when the city does, uh, street improvements and we're just doing spot panel repairs, that's just in our street department repairs and maintenance. And when you have a project on the one and six year plan, it's slated for major improvements, um, as this one should be, so. Um, so that'll be, uh, for your consideration and review and discussion at the next council meeting. Um, administates MOU, um, for the construction, that was approved, that was all drawn up and drafted. Um, one of the representatives of the developers company has signed the MOU, and so had Mayor Garing. I do have a copy of that here, and it's with my office if you need to, um, the city engineer did provide written confirmation to the subdivider, um, of all the construction plans going on before that begins. And they also submitted to us the, um, letter for the final plan agreement for, with escrow and security funds, so that is in place as well, um. That's good to go, one of the other things we're considering right now with that entire project, so when the access road, that's a private access road off of sixty eighth street, is closed for construction of administates subdivision. Um, the owners of two of those lots to the north of town need access off of Cypress Boulevard. So right now, we're negotiating legally what that will look like, and we've been working with the developer and also the city attorney to try to get the most expedient way to do that, so. Since the MOU, um, issues are completed and that's good to go, they need the Cypress Boulevard extension to happen, so. Uh, Mr. Cole, who owns that outlot just to the north of Cypress Boulevard, will be, uh, donating the portion of land for this project. And, uh, the sub- the developer will be doing all the paving, surveying, extending the roadway. And then the quickest way to get this done, uh, between the city and the developers through a quick claim deed or a warranty deed through, um, that we filed with the county. So, basically, what'll happen is, uh, that quick claim deed will come forward, we'll get it all signed in-house. Um, on behalf of the city and the subdivider, we'll file it with Lancaster County Register of Deeds, and now we have another sixty, uh, feet of right away for the city there to extend Cypress. And then it becomes a private drive at the end with, uh, a access roadway to, uh, Dr. Tom Tetrick's property, and then also a private drive then to the Cole property. And the city will acquire then, through this process, additional right away and the extension of Cypress, and that'll help out for future development in the future, if any of those parcels to the north of that location were to be developed in the future, we have that access point ready to go.
What's the timeline for that, for our portion, cause I'm assuming if there, if the MOU is signed for, um. How logistics and materials.
To allow them for construction before the final plat approval.
Yeah, so they're doing that, so then, um, naturally I would assume that that access road is gonna be cut off. So are we holding up progress with our ingredients?
We are not, we're trying to expedite progress on this right now, so I did a confirmation from the city attorney, um, that we can just do a quick claim deed for this, so it can be taken care of in-house within the next couple of days. Uh, the developers', uh, architect representative already has a draft version of it ready to go, so we just need to get some signatures and we can process that as we go forward.
And then once that's signed, they can just?
Yes, yeah, cause they cannot close that access road off of sixty eighth, unless those property owners have access off of Cypress.
Right.
And the city's not gonna give access until we get all of that right away done and the developer gets that paving in, so.
Yeah, no, that's why I was.
It's gonna be a seamless process, it'll just take a few days once and they'll start rolling on it.
Yeah.
Mr. Cole does have a large event on June first, though, that we're trying to make sure all the traffic still goes in off of sixty eighth street, so you'll probably see some action happening after June one.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so that's that one, and then, um, do you guys remember the Scotts Creek Trail project? It's happening, uh, this is the report that we've been waiting for, that was too big for me to print in the office, cause my dilly kept crashing, so they had to bring me a copy of it. Uh, but this is the report we're waiting for from the federal highway. How the National Environmental Policy Act categorical excution for federal aid recreational trail projects. Now that this is in, um, probably at the, I'm guessing the second meeting in June or the first one in July, we'll have the, uh, bids ready to go out for this process and we'll be able to move forward with the Scotts Creek Trail project and get that completed this year as well. Hopefully the contractors are available for me.
One, a couple of things on that, so we got, did we have to get a permit from Core?
Yeah, it's already been applied for.
Alright, so we gotta wait for that. Second, how many trees gotta get removed?
We removed them last fiscal year.
We got them removed?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Good, because.
I think there was thirty of them amongst the trail connections that were.
Cause right now, trees cannot be removed unless there's a wildlife.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Friday, May one.
It's getting, as far as timelines, the, the meeting with trees is getting bad.
For April, this is the meeting, April, sorry, April one, yeah.
No. Through, through November.
Yeah, we, the trees have already been removed.
Through November?
Now it is.
There will be a couple of cleanup issues, that where the, we're putting the trail along our sewer line easement there, which is our property to go on. Um, but there's gonna be a couple little slivers of property that needs to be acquired from, um, the outlot owner or the property owner, um, the Scott family on sixty eighth street. And we already have those documents ready to go, we just couldn't move forward with anything, so, there'll be a little acquisition of property there, um, that will have to run through city council meetings for legalities purposes and by all means county, and. We're ready to go, but the project is ready now, so.
So. So, one of the things, since we have, or for the cons, the water storage, we need that, we need land. So what do we, do we need to give direction or is that just?
Uh, Kelly and I can discuss that and we'll just.
Because I think the sooner the better because from what I understand from him, that geotag survey needs to be done.
We need to know exactly if it is a two hundred by two hundred piece of property or just.
Right, exactly.
One acre, two acres, whatever that looks like.
And we may be able to get permission from the property owner for this survey to be processed prior to purchasing or as in, uh.
Sort of.
We gotta remember there's crops out there.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe crop loss.
Yeah, we did testing when we tried to acquire that for the water, uh, for the wells. We were allowed to do some testing there without the purchase of, so that might be a similar situation here for a timing.
Yeah, it was different talking crop versus Sierra.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's all I have for you this evening.
Any questions for Kelly? Can you tell them about your, gonna be gone? Okay, so I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the city administrator's report.
A second.
Norm?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zeman?
Yes.
Johoda?
Yes.
Cole Wiki?
Yes.
Ford Cart?
Yes.
All right, item twelve, uh, governing body comments and council correspondence. Uh, twelve A is, uh, AED dedication and community celebration event scheduled for Friday, June sixth, two thousand twenty-five at six P M. In the Hickman Main Park at the concession stand. Uh, if you remember, an AED was donated, uh, by.
The Oliver Foundation.
And so we're gonna have a little ribbon cutting there. I know Chris is, uh, contacting several departments, fire departments, it'd be a good deal. Uh, so if you got time, come on down. And then twelve B, annual report on community development projects. I think Kelly handed you out that.
Yep.
Piece of paper.
Required document, uh, of reporting every year for the city of Hickman, uh, their tech projects.
So, that leads us to item thirteen. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Mr. Ford Cart and second by Ms. Zeman to adjourn. Michelle, if you call a roll please. She doesn't want to adjourn.
Ford. Ford Cart made the motion?
Yes.
Ah, yes, and then Tina second.
Um, Norm?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zeman?
Yes.
Johoda?
Yes.
Cole Wiki?
Yes.
Ford Cart?
Yes.
All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, guys.